Today, June 28th, 2022, we're convened with the Provo City School District Board of Education. We're meeting at 280 West, 940 North in Provo, Utah. The time is 7:30 a.m. We will begin with the roll call. Melanie Hall, Board President.
Rebecca Nielsen, Board Vice President.
Jennifer Partridge, Board Member.
Gina Hales, Board Member.
Terry McCabe, Board Member.
Hey Bryce, Board Member.
Derek Anderson, Business Administrator.
Keith Rattell, Superintendent.
All right, is there a motion to convene?
I mean that we convene study session.
All right, we are now in study session. I'm going to turn the time over to Derek Anderson to discuss bids for Provo Middle School.
So, as you know, we are in the middle of preparing for Shoreline and La Sache. Shoreline is at a point now where they are ready to bid. And so they're planning on putting the school out to, or having the bids due on July 14th. And they have asked if we would be willing to do a special session sometime between the 18th and like 21st to approve that bid package. By waiting until August, they're worried that the people who submitted bids will no longer honor their bids. So that they're asking just for a special session just to approve that one project. Is there?
Well, I was just going to ask, if we did a special session, do we have to actually convene in a room or can people just zoom on for this one?
Yeah, it could be something we've done over Zoom. We just adopted that electronic meeting policy. So it would allow us to convene over Zoom. We would still have to have it here in terms of our location and set it up. We could just set up computers and make it work. And that way, that's not, not everybody has to actually come here and be here physically.
Do you guys prefer to do it in the morning or would you rather do it in the evening?
For me, it depends which day we pick because I'm in and out of town now.
I'll be out of town. I'll be on the East Coast.
Can you get on Zoom and do it or maybe?
Yeah, I could get on Zoom.
And we're talking, this is going to be like a 10-minute meeting probably. So which day works better for you, Jennifer? I'm around that week, so.
Um, the morning of the 20th or the afternoon of the 19th. Or I can make my first book.
But if what if we don't do it between 11:00 and 1:00 p.m. on the 20th? Because I'm having a crown put on.
That would be fun.
Yeah.
What if we did the afternoon of the 19th? We could do 5:00 p.m. on the 19th.
Yeah.
Does that work? Is there enough that we could at least have a forum for that day?
5:00 p.m. on the 19th, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So we'll get it set up for the 5:00 p.m. on the 19th. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we're going to have a discussion about the survey results that were sent out to us. Do you want to briefly talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, I think first of all, I'd like to introduce, I don't know if you, if everybody knows somebody or not, Gary Wall. Gary, where are you at?
Oh, sorry.
Gary, he used to work here. He used to, I brought Gary and I knew him many years ago up in Washington as a superintendent, also as a university professor. And Gary came down here, worked at BYU for a while. And he was getting ready to leave BYU and we were having problems in our HR department at that particular time. So I said, Gary, come and, come and fix my HR department. So he did. He worked in the district for five or six years, seven years, I don't know, something like that.
Something like that.
Adrian Jason. And Gary's done a lot of consulting work with boards and districts and on and on and on. And so when Melanie and Rebecca and I, well, I thought Rebecca because she was there in spirit only, but as a person, when we were planning the meeting, we talked about possibly getting a facilitator. And Gary will be here doing that with us. He's mainly here today to watch and listen. When we get to the end, he may have one or two questions for you. But, but for the most part, this is, what was the phrase I used yesterday when we were talking? We're just kind of trying to churn things up a little bit.
Yeah. In my mind, I came away with hide and watch.
Okay.
And just try to capture what, what, what you think is important and in regards to this, this survey and go from there.
Okay, thank you.
It's good to see you all and nice to meet you. And I really love Provo School District. And I see a lot of friends in this room and listen. One of the things I got to do, which makes me kind of happening inside a little bit, is do something similar to this at Herr Elementary School. And I was looking at those records last night, so I always felt it was fun. You've done good.
Also wanted to ask Ron Twitchell, to whether he can. So Ron is here mainly to, Ron's up to his eyeballs trying to get math data together and get it off the state. So, but he did agree to join us for a period of time this morning. Ron is kind of our local guru on the two surveys. So if you have questions about, about some aspects of the surveys that you reviewed, feel free to ask him and he may or may not know the answer. But, but he's here to, to try to answer questions if you have it. So with that said, I think the plan was to give everybody two or three minutes to just describe one or two items that jumped off the page at them. And Melanie, I guess I'll just pass it back to you.
Okay. Before I get started, can I ask Ron just some basic questions about the stakeholder survey?
Sure.
Just that maybe some people listening might understand where this is coming from as well. So how often does the stakeholder survey get sent out?
We send that out every other year.
Every other year? And then what percentage of our, the people who take it, would you say actually take it?
It depends by population. We have more participation with the elementary teachers and parents than we do a secondary. So as you look at, it'd be a very small percentage overall, but there's more participation at the elementary level than at the secondary level for both the parents and the teachers. And we have more students at the secondary level that participate.
Okay. I should know this, but I don't. How long does it usually take for a parent or somebody to take it? Curious.
It, it takes about 45 minutes to complete it. We have those who go through faster, but I don't know if they're actually reading all the question or if you're giving a just a question and answer in it. Or we have some that take quite a bit of time. They'll take over an hour, hour and fifteen minutes to complete. But mostly it's about 45 minutes.
Okay. And then who wrote this, this survey?
This was created by a committee from the USBE that involved educators, administrators, parents. And so they would have a good idea of what they were looking for, what they were. And it was in response to state legislation that wanted to have the survey completed. They wanted the survey for stakeholders and then every alternating year they have the survey for. It's similar to the stakeholder, but it doesn't go to the same population. It's more for in-house, with what's going on, with the educators themselves and the administration is what, what feels like in the, in the district. And that's by state legislation that it goes, the two surveys alternate every other year.
Okay. So you're talking about the engagement survey versus the stakeholder, right? And the engagement is typically in-house and the stakeholders typically outside.
So my last question for this is, reading through these results, is there a way for these to be site-specific? I'm just, if, if we're only getting people maybe from the east side answering this question, it feels like different answers than if we have people from the west side. I'm, if there's a way to make it so it's more site-specific, so that Canyon Crest, if you, you're answering this specifically for Canyon Crest or for Franklin, I'm just thinking it might be more helpful to be like what the differences are between the different places.
Currently, the way that the data is generated, we're not able to do that. But the state does allow us to add a question or two at the end. And it has to be at the end so it doesn't interrupt the flow of what they've done. Because they've done sidrometrics on the actual survey to identify whether or not they're getting the information that they were looking for. And so at the end, we're permitted as a district to add a couple of questions we could at that point ask what schools they participate in for.
All right. Does anyone have other general questions before?
Yeah. So are we required to use it the way the USBE wrote it or could we adapt it?
The only adaptation is adding to the end of the survey. By, by state law, they require the USBE to create the device. The USBE has created it. Now we are held accountable for actually implementing it the way it is. All we can do is add to the end, which makes me nervous because as I said, 45 minutes to complete the survey is a considerable amount of time.
So we need to write to USBE if we think it's too long?
Or come up with something on our own if we want something more concise.
In addition to. Because we do have to continue to administer this.
So the stakeholder survey, that's the one that comes from USBE? And the other one is internal, we?
It's from USBE also.
Both of them are USBE.
By state legislation.
Okay. And I was looking through the results and some of them are specific to parents and some of them are specific to teachers. Do they just skip it if it's not?
It's generated so that if they have a conditional statement in there, depending on how they select it, it automatically takes it to a new track, so they won't see those other questions.
Is there any way to manipulate the data? Like, for example, if we wanted to see answers by ethnicity or whatever? Is there a way to do that?
Currently, no. But we could.
That was just something off the top of my head. I mean, it's just like, there was times when I'm like, I want to know who answered this question, like what the, you know? So it sounds like there could be a possibility of breaking some of the data down if we wanted to be able to manipulate the data a little bit to see different things. Okay. Thank you.
That's my thinking, like, can we break down answers by demographic data? Because without knowing who answered no to a specific question, how can we really get any good information out of this?
Is there any further, like, general questions about the survey? Okay. I'm, I'll just start with some of the things that I noticed. Going through the stakeholder, adult stakeholder survey, one of the things I noticed is there were a lot of people who answered, I don't know. And so I don't know if that means that there's a communication problem or if there's, I don't know what the problem is, but that's something that I noticed.
I think maybe if we could break it down by demographics, that, I had the same question. So I'm like, is that, because it's not just teachers, right, correct? It's any employee. So I'm like, I can see how some employees wouldn't know some of that information and that's why it would be helpful to know who's saying, I don't know. If teachers are saying, I don't know if I have any curriculum, that's the problem. But if it's, if it's the custodial staff, then it's like, okay, well, that makes sense.
Yeah. But I, I mean, a lot of what I did see, I was looking at the percentages of agree or strongly agree and agree. I would say a lot of them were landing in that category, which is, that's all good positive news. But I did see a lot of the, I don't knows on that one. On one of the questions on page 72 on the, was an interesting question that we've been talking about a little bit and just getting there, it takes a minute.
On the stakeholder?
Yeah, on the stakeholder one. That attending school every day is important for my students to do well in their classes. And this was strongly agree and agreed for almost, it was almost 90%, over 90%, which is something that we've talked about as being really important and we're, can be working on that in the future with new attendance.
And I was impressed by that too, but just now as you were looking at, I thought, well, the more involved parents are going to take this time to take the survey and so.
That's why I'd like to see the demographics and where, where, who's taking this? Like, is it all, is it all people from Rock Canyon taking this? Or is this, it would be interesting to see like different things too.
And is that just for parents? My question was, is that just, like, if that's a teacher who's answering it, they're going to say strongly agree. Is it a parent? I don't, that's why I'm like, uh.
Based on the numbers of responses on that, I think that one's.
There's more parents just because, yeah, there were over a thousand people.
And not to disagree, did, were the elementary parents or high school parents?
Yeah.
Yeah, you just don't know. So.
And then on the engagement, the USBE engagement ones for teachers, again, I saw mostly pretty positive. And I did feel like, especially when they were asking things about like what makes, what makes it hard, a lot of them felt like it was harder than it was expected, that they were feeling overworked. It was nice to see a place for them to comment. There was a lot of comments, but I think we gained and we gleaned a lot from those comments of how to help. So anyways, those are my insights of what I found and I'll, we can just go around the room and see other things.
So I came up with, on the stakeholder survey, I came up with two of this almost exact same observations as Melanie. I saw first a lot of, I don't know. And I thought to myself, how can we communicate better? People have no idea. And it was over and over and over again. So I don't know, it's a little bit alarming. The other thing that I thought about from the stakeholder survey is there was a lot of, you know, your options are strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree, and I don't know. There was a lot of agree. We come out overwhelmingly great for the most part on agree, which is good. But I thought, how can we take us from like, this is kind of cliche, but like good to great? How can we get this to where a lot of people strongly agree with a lot of the positive statements? And then on the engagement survey, similar ideas similarities, but what I feel like jumped out at me a lot is that our teachers, it was more pay, more time. We need more pay, we need more time. More pay, more time, more pay, more time. If you just go through the comments over and over and over again, it feels like that was the general feeling from our teachers. And so it made me think, like, I know we have districts nearby that, you know, pay people out of their prep periods, they don't have prep periods, you know, like, how does that? I wonder how it fares in other districts when teachers take the survey. Do they feel the same way? Is it like a universal feeling that's going to be one of those things that's going to always be hard to combat no matter the circumstances? Or in our neighboring districts where they don't even have prep periods, but they pay them for that? Does that come out? Do teachers come out happier? I'd be interested to see how that works. Because I know we try really hard to make sure our teachers have that extra time, small class sizes, et cetera. And so that's an effort we've made, but yet we're still hearing more time on a lot of our, on a lot of our results.
So I wonder, I don't think that any district is going to release their results to a neighboring district. But we might be able to target one or two questions and just ask them how they came out on that. I'm going to ask Jason to think about it, how he might reach out to our two neighboring districts on that issue.
Right.
And just see where we fare.
Right. That's a place I feel like we've made a pretty good concentrated effort to make sure our teachers are happy. And so how does it work in other districts where they're not getting the same benefits? Are they filling the same results? And if so, then maybe, I don't know, maybe it doesn't matter what we do, maybe it does. I don't know, but just, I'm just curious about how that works.
Because they have to do the same, exact same survey, right? And are those public that we could ask, request to see in other districts?
I guess it's USBE, I don't know.
Could be, I don't know. I've never heard of districts sharing those, the results, but I, it doesn't mean that they couldn't. I just don't know.
USBE may, may be willing to give them out. I've called USBE for financial information of other districts and they've given it to me.
So are we required to tell USBE what our survey results were?
We turn them in.
Ron's saying yes. And she said.
I have to actually, when I activate it, I have to actually set it up. So it sends the data to USBE as it is brought in.
Okay.
They harvest it the same time.
Okay. Can I ask one more question about the engagement survey with the teachers? So I noticed that it was about 136 educators, mostly L. Ed., and they were mostly veteran teachers. Is this a requirement for teachers to fill out, like, or no, so this is just solely based on we send it out? Is there a percentage we're supposed to hit? No.
No. We have a window that we're supposed to have it open for, which is usually not a very opportune time. It's when the teachers are the busiest and so it's very hard to get the data from them, especially a new teacher who's probably up to their eyeballs trying to get the work done and they're, they're just trying to survive and all of a sudden they have a survey that is not required. So they don't, that's why you would see that population.
Sorry, this is a general question. So the, the primary consumers of, of the, of the data that we gather from those is USBE?
USBE and the state legislature because they, they require it, so they feed it on to them.
Okay, thanks.
What we're doing here is fairly unique, this discussion today. Because I, in my ten years in the district, I don't know, we've been talking about the survey results. It, for, for the most part, it's been more of a compliance issue because the state says do it, and we do it and that's the end of it. But it, you know, it's probably an opportunity for us to look at at least some of the data against my ideas I could do today.
Jennifer, you have, or sorry, Rebecca, where are you done?
Well, I just had, you just triggered one more thought. I wonder too, and Gina, to your statement, if this is, if this is for the state? I mean, it's, it's definitely been helpful to read it, but I wonder if it really is going to be the most helpful thing for us or if we need something more geared directly towards our district and our needs. I don't know, it's just.
Plus, we're not really sure what the state does. I mean, did they look at it? Did they study it? Do you know, Jason?
So this, the way I understand how this came about is that years ago, about 2014, the legislative body was looking at whether or not districts were gathering data about why teachers leave and whether or not, you know, local stakeholders were, were happy with the service that their students were receiving. So several of us actually went and spoke with the education committee. We were collecting our own data at the time. We had our own survey for people who would leave the district that they would complete. And then the other survey that we did was a separate stakeholder survey that we created to be a part of the evaluation system for teachers. And because we were a district that were doing that and there weren't many at the time, that's one of the reasons why we went and spoke with the legislators about it. In the end of that, they were looking at wanting to have it be an expectation statewide that people gather data about not only stakeholder input, but engagement. The engagement portion was kind of the thing that they were a little more after as far as trying to, to figure out retention for teachers. How could we keep teachers here in the state? And so we actually, up until 2019, I believe, when COVID hit, we had run our own stakeholder survey. Legislation changed and they then required us to run this survey. So we had, we had ran a separate survey to gather data to then give to our individual schools that was broken out that way to help them know how they were responding to their stakeholders, how they were helping the people of their school specifically. But because of the legislation and COVID, COVID did a strange thing in that, it did many strange things. But it did a, it, it created a strange situation where the state suspended the evaluation process for a couple of years. And so because we weren't required to do it, we didn't want to have one more thing to teachers' plates or parents' plates by asking them a survey about stakeholder input or engagement rate. And so we were completing the ones that were required by the state, but we weren't sending out a separate one that was our own. But that, I believe that's the history as to how they came to this place of wanting these two surveys to alternate. And they're fairly recent, you know, they're, they've just been something that's been required by law for the last, I want to say, three, four years.
Just to add on to what Rebecca said, I, I, as I was reading through, I was thinking, you know, there's some good questions in here that I think we can use, but I'd like some more specifics. But then on top of that, I thought, how many surveys are we going to give them? And how good is the data going to be if we continually give them surveys? And so I'm wondering, I mean, this is what the discussion's for, I guess. I'm wondering if we just need to be able to pull the questions that we feel are good off of this, add a couple of questions. I just don't know. And perhaps maybe the difference would be method of distributing the survey? Because as a parent, now it's very possible that I filled this survey out because I, I'm a data junkie. I will, I will fill stuff out. I have no recollection of filling this out and I don't, is it sent out by email?
It's left up to each school to take care of it. Most of them will have it signed in the front office and have like a QR code. They can scan that quickly.
I remember getting an email.
You got an email? Okay.
But a lot of them do send out, you know, I just can't say for sure that everybody does.
And so that's something that needs to be looked at. Because if you've got some schools sending it out by email, you're going to get a higher return rate than a, I don't go into the office and I, yeah, I do, kind of, but only because I'm a board member.
So I do send it out, but I don't know what the schools do on their end, if they are sending it out as well to try to engage them or QR codes or anything like that.
Okay. But anyway, so the method of like, I know that when we went to the conference, they said that sometimes some of the schools were saying they would take a short survey to the cars as the parents were lined up waiting for their kids and they got a really high response rate. But at the same time, do we want to, I guess that's something we need to think about. Do we want to do another survey and get it, overload some of the parents? I, I don't know. That's a question.
Have to do it at a different time.
It could be at a different time.
I think it's five minutes.
It needs to be a shorter, shorter, we need to decide exactly what would be important to ask.
And I think that we need to vary the methods of, of distribution of the survey. And, and if we're going to do that, like, there's no point in doing another, just email survey? Like, if we're going to add one, we need to figure out a different way to try and get information. Otherwise, we can just use this information, in my opinion.
Jennifer?
Something that stood out to me was the questions in the stakeholder survey that looks like it was just for the teachers and staff. The majority of time while at work, I feel, and they had a bunch of different options. And overall, it was very positive. Very few angry's, low on anxious, very appreciative, very competent, happy and grateful.
Paige, can I?
I was just looking for it, but this is.
Well, I, I took screenshots. I don't know, question 300-ish.
On which one?
That's the stakeholder. Sorry, I took screenshots, I know where.
Jennifer, I think they're labeled two, if you look at the.
2.2?
Yeah, so Q2 42 and.
They're not in any order.
3.1, but they're not really in order.
Yeah, that was.
I was like page number.
I'll look it up.
It's, yeah, I was just scrolling through and I came across it and now I can't find it.
Sorry. Maybe in the 40s.
I'm sorry, Jennifer.
Yeah, so I've just, the way I did it, like you are, I just did it by number.
Okay, thanks.
And the only thing that kind of weren't as positive that got higher was more felt overwhelmed and stressed, which I think is to be expected. I also was very excited when I, at the time, I thought it was the question all the adults answered, but it says, members of our school staff work to create a safe and welcoming environment for all students. That's question 261. And most people strongly agreed or agreed. Then I realized by the numbers that, oh, this is just the staff themselves, which I'm glad that they all feel that they are working to create that safe and welcoming environment because to create one, it has to be intentional. So they are working on it. But I would love to see what parents think of that, what students think of how our environment is on that. And then on the engagement survey, if I was. And then on the engagement survey, as I was going through, it's around page, I don't know, nine through 13 or something, about mentors. Those teachers are new and they have mentors. Overall, it seemed like having a mentor or teacher has been a positive experience, but not for everybody. And some were glad to have support, some wanted more support, some said they bothered me too much. So it just made me think on some of these, like, it would be great to share the results with the people that are in leadership in the district that it deals with. And then they can say, okay, how could we make more personalized this mentorship? Or, you know, some of our other programs. How do we, we just want to make sure, even though we've all said the data could be more helpful, if we'll look what we have, how can we still utilize it to help us improve? Make sure it does get out to more than just this room.
I agree with what Jennifer just said, I had the same thought. I've been in a meeting and I believe it was Lindsay, I guess who was, I don't think she was in a role as PEA. She was in roles as like the, over the mentors for the teachers. And I thought she could probably use this information. I think maybe we should, I wonder if we could look at it or have people look at it and see what information might be helpful for them? Because if we're gathering this data, I know it's for the state, but there's some really good information in here. I think we should be sharing it with the people in the district that may be able to use that information. That was one of the things that I had on my list. I have some specific things, I'm not sure, screenshot is a really good idea, but I didn't think of it 11 o'clock last night. But I noticed that the teachers were saying they, they're asked to do a lot of extra stuff. And I want to know what that extra stuff is. And sometimes it's just required, right? But I, I don't know how we tease that out, but they were saying, they kept saying, we're asked to do all this extra stuff. And I'd be curious to know what the extra stuff is and if there's anything that we can do as a district to not give extra stuff. I noticed that there was one question, I apologize, I don't know where it is because I was a little overwhelmed when I looked, and one of them was 394 pages. And I'm like, I can't do that. And I realized it was only, you know, 200 pages that I had to look at. But one of them, it was the teacher survey or the, I can't remember, the engagement survey, I believe, there was high dissatisfaction with their job. And then there was another one that was, I mean, I guess there were some that said that they were satisfied in some aspects, but basically they felt burned out, overwhelmed and didn't really, I mean, that stood out. And then I looked at it, it was this year, I think it's been a rough few years for the teachers. But that stood out to me. And it stood out to me that they, so in the qualitative answers where they filled it in, there were a lot of them saying they feel as if the district quote unquote sides with parents. And that also, there was quite a number of them that feel that we should tell the legislators what to do. And I'm like, maybe we just need some education here because we, if I could tell the legislators what to do, I would tell the legislators what to do. And so I think may, I don't know if there needs to be some education or anything, but I, I mean, if that's adding to job dissatisfaction, that they think that we aren't telling the legislators what we think or that we, you know, that we could do more in that, then maybe, I don't know. But that stood out to me like, ah, I wish, I wish I could do that. Anyway, I think there's some great information, I think we could probably pull some of the, like, the school climate, like what Jennifer was talking about, how do the parents feel? There were a couple of questions that appeared to me to be toward parents about, does your child feel safe? Do you feel welcome? I like those questions, we may just need to figure out how to pull those. I'm not opposed to doing school-specific surveys like we talked about that we administer in different ways. But yeah, that's all I have.
Gina, I felt like I got a little bit of insight because I had the same thought about your first comment about, you know, there's a lot of like, stop adding things to my plate, like, what is that? And just reuse some of the comments, you've probably caught this, but a lot of them mentioned letter straining, like, that it was great, but it was a lot, I feel like, I don't know if you caught that too. And a lot of them too also mentioned when it was like, stop putting things on our plate. We are teachers, we're not psychologists, we're not parents, we're not. And they like listed all these like, kind of things we're seeing, these extra burdens that are being placed on teachers. And I don't know necessarily, and maybe they'll disagree with us, that it's us placing it on them. But I think like you, you've nailed it, like, a lot of outside is things happening that's just burdening teachers in general.
And I noticed that some of them, I couldn't tell exactly what they were getting at, but when I was kind of trying to figure out what they were talking about, some of them feel as if they are being asked to basically dance around topics or to add or take away all of these things. And they're not able to just teach, they have to now tippy-toe around all of these topics. And that is, it's wearing on them. And I don't, I don't see that as they're trying to get away with anything or they're trying to avoid responsibility. I think they just want to do their jobs. And so I think on top of everything else we've talked about, I think just the climate right now is a tough climate. Because I noticed that the question to ask, do you feel appreciated by the parents, was very, that was not.
That was same one and that was really sad to look at.
Nate?
I don't know if I have too much to add. I, as a general thought, I didn't mind some of the I don't know just because sometimes you just don't know things because you're not, it hasn't got to the point where you're concerned enough to know because it doesn't bother you. You might not know if kids are being bullied because your kid hasn't been bullied. So to me, that, most of those weren't too bad. I did think it was interesting that most of the negative things had, had to do with either us as a school board and things that we're in charge of, like the pay, or things that the legislature's in charge of as adding on lots of different things that teachers have to do, adding requirements to their job, or things that the community is doing, like parents being aggressive, you know, the parent empowerment movement that's kind of going along, which I'm not, I'm not opposed to. But, and less of the negative had to do with their interactions with their administration and the district. So I thought that was, that was really good because I think the system's kind of set up for that. So for me, that was a positive. I, I would like to see the state set up a website because they have all this data. It wouldn't be very hard, just where we could compare ourselves, and everyone's already said this, where we could compare ourselves to all the other answers to see where we stand. Because I don't really know if any of those answers are good or bad because we need something comparable against. And if the state's pulling all the data, or at least the USBE, they need, they need to put it up so it's comparable. So that's all I got.
Nate, Carrie?
I mean, there's some really good data here, but we need to be able to use it too, you know. Ron, does the USBE allow us to do a correlation coefficient or some kind of statistics on our own data?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so how's that happen?
No. As Jason stated, it's only been in place for about three, four years. As it got started with, if COVID hit and we've been pretty busy trying to keep things afloat. And so I haven't done it because I haven't been asked to do it. And I haven't had time to just do it because of curiosity, so I haven't been attempted yet. I can if that's your desire.
Well, I mean, I would think the correlation coefficient would be the best one for this data unless you think something else would be better. I mean, we would have to have an R and a P value for each question and answer.
For those of us who didn't take statistics, can you tell us what you're talking about and why that would be helpful, please?
Well, it just asks, is all of these questions, are they relevant? And does it apply to every answer? Is it, does it correlate with all the answers? You'll get like a negative and a positive R value, which will tell you, yes, this is a negative, you know, which means there's more disagree answers or more agree answers or. And then the P value just tells you that everything that they did was statistically significant or valid.
Is that something you do on a survey after it's done or?
Yeah, yeah. You can't do any of this. I mean, usually you take the data from a survey, it comes, you get to put it into like an Excel file. And then from there, you can put it into SPSS or some kind of program and then click a bunch of buttons to see which statistic you want. And then it prints out a whole bunch of pages that tells you what you want to know. And then if there's one question that you're like, I don't know the answer to, let's, let's look more closely at this question. Then maybe you can do something like the ethnic questions. Okay, let's delete a certain people out of this and see of the rest of the categories, how did they answer?
So with what you're, the correlation, what Kelly's talking about is you brought the question of that we're being between attendance and grades, right? So you're, what you're doing is you're saying, this one value, attendance, does it correlate with grades? And as you put them together, both the data, the data points, what happens is, is there's, in the linear regression model, zero means there's no correlation. A one means there's positive correlation and a negative one means there's negative correlation. So what it's doing is, is the value that kicks out, say it kicks out a value of a 0.85, right? That means there's strong positive correlation that as you miss.
The closer to one is the stronger correlation, but closer to zero means there's no correlation. These two things have nothing to do with each other.
Well, since we don't have demographic information, school information, do we have enough data points to do that extra work?
Does it get, can put it into an Excel file once completed?
The demographics aren't there, but yes, the question, the answers are, we can put it into a spreadsheet. We can, we can run this statistical analysis on it. My concern for doing that and why I haven't had, I haven't done it out of curiosity is because it's being generated for the state, by the state. So it's like a 10,000-foot perspective.
Yeah, you're going to get like a thousand pages on all this data.
And with everything that I've got going on right now, I just haven't had the curiosity to sit down and run that for that.
I don't know with these two surveys, if we should because we don't have, like we said, the demographic data that we need. I mean, if we do ours, our own kind of survey, if that the state legislature allows us, and then add on our questions and be able to, you know, separate it by demographics, then, then we can get the statistics that we actually, that will be relevant to us.
I wouldn't suggest doing it for this one. There's not enough information there.
But for future.
I agree.
Does the state run any of these diagnostics or anything? Do they do anything like that or is it just raw data? Like, what, are they using this or is just, just to talk them on about?
They're using it for reporting purposes, I don't know if they're doing any analysis.
I hope they are, why would they get it?
legislature by law.
That's what I was making, if I had to fill this out.
They may just be doing it because it's part of law and they're just checking the box. It could be, I mean, I would hope that they're using it for some purpose.
If I, if I may add, and Jason can add to this, one of the reasons legislatively that this was required was for employee evaluations. It's a component of each, the stakeholder survey is part of each employee's evaluation.
What does that mean?
Although this one, so they actually changed directions with this one. This one does not have to be a part of the, of the evaluation. The way the law reads is that we need to, as a school district, run our own way to collect information from our stakeholders to then give feedback to the teachers and allow them to change or, you know, have a rating of how they interact. This one was different because it is more geared towards responding to the legislature over how do the, how do our stakeholders feel statewide about the services that their students are receiving? So we have used this one because we, I think you touched on it earlier, Board, when you were talking about the amount of surveys we send out. So we chose not to try to send multiple and just use this information instead because we didn't want to over-survey the parents or the teachers on the information we're gathering. But it's not required to use this one for the evaluation.
But some stakeholder input is required.
Yes, this, this, well, on the evaluation itself, it's required, but also this is required by law separately of it, so.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion about the survey itself or any other things you want to talk about about the survey? I think we've got a really good sense of like, kind of where we want to go, I feel like, but, or starting point.
So my question is, what do we, we've had a discussion which I think is good, what's next?
That's a good question. Again, similar to like what you guys were saying, I think we need to decide maybe based on our goal, what, what information are we trying to get? Like, maybe we take this and we say, what, what, what information did we find useful? Take those questions and make our own, be able to do the demographics and take it from there.
So I think later we're going to start talking about board goals. And I think once we either solidify what we have or adapt and whatever our board goals end up being, I think that's what we want to know about what our direction for our district is going to be. And so then maybe, starting with the end of next school year, whatever survey we want to put together, we align our questions to be on our board goals. Because then we've already determined what is important to us and how are we doing.
Right. Yeah.
Just comment on that. One of the things that how we do in school district improvement is look at, you know, you have this whole bit of data, as you said, your aim and your goals. And I really appreciate those comments personally that have been a potential helper to you. That this, that when you ask for information about how we're doing and how you're doing, you look at all kinds of different data points. And one of the most important of the four or five that I was trained to, to help people improve is perception data. And right now, this is our, this is our current can of perception data. And I just appreciate the discussion, how can we use it, what can we do? And I really appreciate, and I would just echo that, that we can use this, at least this bit of data to help us in our next thing, which is to look at our goals. And then making how we can change those and do it. But it's just a bit of information that we can use to help improve ourselves. So where is the perception data for Provo City School District? There ought to be a place to have perception data, but this is it right now. So if that's, it fits in the data collection to improve.
And let me add, I think it's too early right now to be saying what our next steps are. Our next steps are bluntly to continue the discussion and churn it up because that's, really what we're going to try to do is extract some ideas which will inform or revise board goals. There's probably more for us to think about from the results of the survey, surveys, as well as the input from council, as well as our discussion about the board goals themselves. So I'm not mean to put anybody down as I say that, it's just, we're going to live in a, in a, in a territory of messiness right now. It's not going to feel secure because it's going to be very uncertain in terms of the direction we go. But, but this is just part of the process, churning up all of these ideas to generate something concrete down the road. So with that said, do you want us to go into our?
Yeah, I think we can go to the next part.
Okay. So I've made this optional for council members. If they don't really want to share something powerful and compelling, that's fine. But, you know, it would be reflected in your evaluation.
Coercively.
Those who didn't want to have skipped out, Todd. Todd's at the Abbott training with.
He actually emailed me with what he wants.
Oh, did he? You're going to say it? All right, good job.
You have to say it in his voice and sound and everything, okay?
Any questions, please make them as non-complicated as possible like that back to him so that he's squirting them over.
Jason, you want to kick us off?
Sure, you bet. Good morning, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to each of you. I apologize, Gina, I'm trying to think Nate's over here, I don't know how to be helpful with that.
I don't know how to be helpful with that. I'll take just a moment. Mine, the emphasis I wanted to talk about today is something that you as a board discuss quite frequently. And so I would say I come to you with more of an expression of gratitude for your emphasis on wanting to pay people correctly, to emphasize the need to pay our employees a competitive wage. And so, you know, I would, I would state it again as a, as a thank you and I would ask that we continue to work towards that. I know that that's been a major focus of the board in the time that I've been a part of HR. And I want to say thank you for the work that you've done to support teachers and, and all other employees. I feel like our employees, many of the things I've heard since our negotiations and the ratification of those have been positives about the work the board has done. You know, a lot of people have been very excited about Derek and the work that he has done since arriving. So again, I guess my comment today is more an expression of thanks for the work that you're doing and ask that we continue.
Before we pass it on to Anne Marie, I will tell you that I was supposed to introduce this section by saying, these are kind of teasers that we're introducing to. We're giving you an overview of, of a concept and then we're happy to develop this more in discussion with you or you can ask us further questions for more details, whatever. It's just, we're trying to, to at least contribute something to the discussion here. So, Anne Marie?
So sorry, Jason, do you feel like that's your number one, your number one teacher pay?
I would say employee pay because we need to keep everyone happy and try to, you know, attract the right employees and, you know, for years we, we talked mainly about teacher pay, but I would, you know, I, I think in saying that, we were always concerned about all employees. So yes, I would say that's number one. We, the funny thing about HR is there's probably a couple of number ones. With what we've gone through recently, social, emotional health and wellbeing is a, is a huge emphasis that we work on. It's been one of our top initiatives for the last two years. So we really work on that, but, but you can't help people socially and emotionally if you don't have them here because they don't want to work for you and you don't pay them enough, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I want to introduce my topic by telling a story. Twenty-seven years ago this month, I got hired to teach at Mazer School and it was the school I went to as a child and I was thrilled. I mean, to go back, they gave me keys to the school. Think about having keys to your elementary school. It was awesome. And I was an enthusiastic young teacher and I was trying to do everything I should. In those days, there was much, much, much less emphasis on standards-based teaching and so I opened the closet and found all these, oh, here's a reading program, here's a writing program, here's this character program, here's this. My colleagues gave me resources and I was trying to do everything I should have. I'll tell you, it wasn't February until I located a copy of the standards. We just taught the programs we had. And one day in our team meeting, the team leader for first grade gave me, gave all of us copies of the Chiquita Banana Nutrition Program. And I was like, you know, I'm a new teacher, are we supposed to do this? And I'm reading through it, like, I guess this is good information and, but even then, when there was a far less emphasis on knowing the standards, focusing on ELA and math, I had an overwhelming feeling of how am I supposed to teach all of this? I mean, especially when I had little first graders who are still trying to recognize lower names and sounds. So that's a demonstration of what I felt from what I hear from teachers a lot. I will say this is one of the things I hear from them the most. And it's more elementary because secondary is subject-specific and so they get to kind of focus on their area, generally speaking. But I frequently hear teachers say, I only have 45 minutes to teach reading or I only have 45 minutes, 25 minutes to teach math. And I'm so puzzled by this, but I think what's happening is in our desire to provide students with great opportunities in STEM and Beverly, Taylor, Sorensen Arts Programs and Codi Music Programs and DLI Language Programs and everything on top of it, teachers are finding their schedules overfilled. And it's, it's all good stuff. But I would maintain, and I think the data really prove this out, that if we don't get kids reading in elementary school by third grade, the results are almost disastrous. The National Reading Panel report that came out over 20 years ago, it, it's almost a hopeless feeling reading about it because the kids that don't get foundational reading skills cemented early tend to not get them after third grade. They just don't pick them up to fluency. So again, there are a few teachers I run into, it seems like every time I go grocery shopping. And some of them work at different schools, again, where they have art programs or DLI programs or, or all of those. And they're just saying, my schedule's eaten up and I'm, I'm brokenhearted. I'm glad that we have all of these great opportunities. I also think it's untenable if we want our students to really get the basic skills that are critical for post-third grade study because we've got to invest in that time. That's why the state has pushed letters and it is great. That's why we've got 95% group going on. We got a new reading program and we've made some really good progress. But when the teachers are saying, I don't have time for it because of all these other good things, I think we benefit from talking about approaches. One approach is focus schools where elementary schools, for instance, years ago, I went to Washington DC to, to learn about dual immersion programs. And we went to the city, I believe it was Arlington, Virginia. I also know that Cambridge District did this in Massachusetts about 30 years ago in an effort really to desegregate their schools. They made every elementary school a focus school of some sort. DLI, arts, STEM, whatever. And then everyone got to choose which school they went to. And that naturally desegregated because it was no longer by area. Now busing, if Troy were in here, he would be having a nervous breakdown right now because I don't know that, that we can afford that. But that's one approach and we could think about, there are ways of doing sister schools where, you know, students choose from two schools. There are ways of saying, hey, we're going to protect the curricula for K three students. We're going to protect their time so that it, so that we can meet our foundational goals. Maybe elementary schools, if they're going to have a focus, it's one rather than lots because we have schools trying to do everything. This involves a lot of PR work, as you can imagine. No parent wants to hear, oh, we're not doing this program anymore that their student has loved. So there, there are a lot of, I think there's a lot of messaging. I think there's a lot of hard choices. I think that there are some, some mechanisms or schemes we could set up. But I am most concerned particularly as we're seeing the COVID slump. And, and we're actually, we just got some data showing we may be back to pre-COVID levels in our K three students, some exciting data. But it's a problem we will always have is preparing our youngest students to be able to do the, the more content-specific work that they'll encounter in their late elementary and secondary education.
I've got some questions.
Sure.
So I love, I love hearing that we need to put a bigger emphasis on reading. That's what I, that's what I do in my school. I have my time dedicated to reading and I fully agree. So all the extras, how much are we allowed to weed out? How much is required? How much is, how much is effective on our part? Could you quantify that like off the top of your head?
I think I could describe it as the state doesn't tell you how you structure, well, I should say, the state does tell us how we should structure our day. There's guidance on that that we sign to. We, I can't say we're great at following that by every teacher, every school. But I think that the reality is when I was teaching third grade, I remember saying, I have 12 content areas I'm supposed to teach. Arts was in four categories and I, I couldn't teach kids to that level. So one of the things we forced individual teachers to do and schools to do is to say, what am I not going to do well? I mean, it really, I, I'm a believer that unfortunately, that sounds negative, but I think it gets us where we go. We have to release teachers from some things and say, we're not saying this is bad at all, but this is more important. And how do we get there? So the state does not tell us, well, you don't really have to do theater in the arts curriculum or you don't really have to do social studies in kindergarten. But we're, we're having people make those decisions on their own by not providing a little bit more guidance to them to make those decisions.
There are some subject areas where they do, right? Isn't there, isn't there a minimum PE?
Secondary level.
Experiences?
In the elementary level, it's, it's not related to PE. I believe it's related to recess, so breaks for students. And the state does have a reading, here's what you're supposed to be doing for half-day kindergarten, full-day kindergarten. Again, what I'm hearing from teachers is that's not universally happening. And I understand the pressures that are getting them there.
So, so am I right in understanding that we have these certain standards we have to meet, but we're not necessarily guided, I mean, we're not necessarily told exactly how much time we have to spend. So if we wanted to, we could put a greater emphasis on reading or we could.
Correct. And the state's goals are, our only goal with teeth from the state is K three reading goals. That's the only one where they come in and say, we're not funding you, or they could come and say, we're going to put coaches in and we're going to use the money in the way we think it should be used in your district.
They give a specific line, I think, for funding for K three reading and that's why they would do that.
So they're really, okay. So there already is kind of an emphasis on it.
There is a huge emphasis, yeah.
And maybe we need to act on it.
I, I think that that's really, it's not that that's not there, but there are so many great advocacy groups for all these other things. And again, you're telling people to choose, that's a hard thing because they're all good.
So are you suggesting we get rid of some of those?
Not necessarily. I, I think that there are, for instance, Beverly, Taylor, Sorensen really tries to focus on integration and building that can be helpful. I, I just think we have to make selections and I, I don't know how. My skills as a first grade teacher, if I were in a DLI school that also had the Beverly, Taylor, Sorensen Arts Program and also had a STEM focus, I don't know how I'd get my first graders reading on level with that time competition.
If you were a DLI teacher, because my daughter goes to one, but there's only certain teachers that do DLI, is that correct?
Yeah, right. I, I think even though not in a DLI. In my, when I was a principal, my thinking was we could have one focus outside of the general curriculum. I think in the general curriculum with all the standards, social studies, science, health, PE, we need to have a discussion about what's most important and allocation of time. And then there's that second level of we're going to do something extra to elevate, you know, for instance, STEAM, for instance, DLI. I mean, the, the, the data on DLI is really good. We get most of that from Canada where all their schools are DLI or most of their schools are DLI, DLI teaching French. And we have amazing results, what our kids can do at the end in sixth grade. If you haven't gone to one of the schools, go to second grade math and Chinese and it will blow you away. Those are great results and it's difficult to measure DLI because they're learning two languages and we're only really measuring one. So that's why we, we sometimes see that dip that tends to pick up in fifth and sixth grade. So I, I don't think anyone should be targeted for, no, we shouldn't do it anymore. There's, there's worth in that, but maybe we should say, we're going to limit what our school is. And maybe it's more of an emphasis in the upper grades in elementary. There were some of these discussions that, you know, need to be, go on in secondary too. For instance, with our credit system, I mean, students, if we have a student who's really low in reading, they don't take two sessions. They get, I mean, they get a class for reading as much as they get one for PE. So do we need some, and some schools have set up some mechanism for an intervention class or a double dosing class. But that, again, making that more, if our system helped make those decisions, so it's not individual departments and individual teachers having to make that call on their own of, I guess I only do health for 10 minutes a week or, you know what I mean?
How much does our current curriculum from the elementary, especially the K through three, integrate already some of the social studies, some of the science kind of curriculum? So as they're learning to read, they're reading about some of those things?
Yeah. It does a, a fair job of that, I would probably say. The K three core standards are written to try to be integrated and our material supports that in some way. The way I think of integrated teaching is foreground and background. You have the foreground and this is, I have got some real, some standards, here's where my learning targets come from, come from. In the background, I'm getting you familiar with maybe the concept of the precipitation, you know, so that's, and I may have some, some long-term learning goals or exposure goals here. So it really depends which one's foreground and background and that's kind of a concept we need to teach in and of itself.
I was just about to ask, do, do the teachers understand that idea?
They do and it's a, there's a lot of different feelings on what is the math teaching or integrated teaching and you'll get 100 opinions for 100 teachers. I think we can show, because our, for instance, the curriculum we just adopted, they work with national social studies and science standards, which our state has aligned with. So there is cross-content information. So we have things in place to help teachers do that. I don't know that they always feel like they're getting to teach science as much as they want to, or they're getting to teach social studies as much as they'd like to.
And do you, you're saying the teachers feel this way? Do the principals know that their teachers feel this way? Because I, I think we do need to give some board direction, but it sounds like some of this has been decided at school level.
Sure. I, I think it varies by school. I think, you know, you know, the, the very real pressure that principals have to increase or better the perception of their school. And oftentimes a strategy to do that is to pick a emphasis or a theme. And those are kind of those feel-good spotlights or spotlight pictures are not usually of kids learning spelling. You know, it's the STEM fair, it's the field trip to the state capital. So I think that they are in a bit of a conundrum in terms of, I have to have something to pull parents in besides regular good old teaching of the three Rs. I, I think there are some variance among schools on, from principals on where they'd like to be. I think many feel the pressure of certain programs. DLI schools need to have someone who really know the program and know the goals and I think they need to feel supportive, this is your big emphasis. Going much beyond this is probably going to be difficult to manage that.
So we have a district-wide curriculum that we set and as the board reapproved it and we said, this is what we want you to use. Can we set, we want you to spend X amount of time every day on reading or have those expectations for teachers and then they have to work around that time?
I believe that's under the board's discretion.
Right now, is it school by school? Is that how it's happening right now?
Generally speaking, elementary. Generally speaking, elementary schools have a school-wide schedule. That can vary from school to school. One school I know has 10 minutes for fluency instruction, 15 minutes for comprehension instruction, 30 minutes for writing instruction, and some have, here's a 45-minute block for whole-group reading, here's a 45-minute for small-group reading. The state, like I say, has set those for every, for DLI, non-DLI, half-day kindergarten, full-day kindergarten grades, K through three. So they have very specific numbers, and in our reading plan each year, which we'll bring to you in August, we're supposed to commit to those. Part of it is information and really helping teachers practically see how that happens in their schedules.
If we standardize it across the district, do we risk, I don't know how to say this, like messing up the individual needs of each school based on the kids they have?
I don't think standardizing what the state is telling us we have to do and we've signed to do, I don't think that's a problem. I think informing more about it and supervising that that is actually going on, that, I think that that, I wouldn't see any problem in that. And I don't think that most teachers, I think most teachers, particularly in the younger grades, are saying, I know I need more time for this, but how do you fit it in? Especially when the chicita banana unit comes in.
Right. We just need to approach it in a way where our intention comes across as, we're helping you not, oh my gosh, I fell short five minutes.
Exactly.
The district's gonna be mad at me.
Yeah. Oh, I absolutely think it comes from that and from telling principals, too, releasing them from the, you know what, the basics are where we need to start and focus on. And maybe you don't have to be everything to everyone, that we are the STEM and DLI and BTS and this, and this, and this, and this school. Providing everything to everyone is sometimes, it might look good, it might photograph well for Instagram, but it might be leaving behind some of our most important rocks.
And just, not that we need to do anything about it now, but just to add to the discussion, there are some schools, for example, the school my daughter goes to is a DLI school, but it's, it was DLI before DLI was a thing. Because it's a necessity, because we have so many Spanish speakers. And so I would hate for us to come down as a district and say, all right, we need to focus on just DLI, which is great, and I don't want to overwhelm the teachers, but at the same time, it's more of a life thing, right? It's just, we have to do this. This is the way that's specific to the students in the school. I would still like them to be, maybe not STEM, but maybe the arts, like the Beverly Taylor, whatever. I just, kind of what you guys were just saying, I would just want to make sure that we're not too heavy-handed so that we deprive any schools of the opportunity. Like, I really think that those kids in my daughter's school need something besides DLI, because DLI is everyday. DLI is just, is just reality for them. Not that we should, shouldn't, or should focus on it, but I do agree that I think maybe narrowing some focus, rather than having three main focuses, we need to have one main focus with some supporting things happening, I think might be good.
To that point, I think the devil's in the details. And I think our principals and teachers are prepared to work on those details, knowing they have support and knowing there is guidance on if you have, I said to my teachers when I was principal, I want to give them everything, but if you have to cut something, and you are telling me you necessarily do because you don't have time in the day, so let's decide as a group. Taking things off the plate is one of the hardest things we do in education, and people have to know that there is support behind them in taking things off the plate.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
Mine's talking, yours is exciting. So...
Wait, is this you or Todd speaking?
Yes. I'll get to Todd in just a minute. This is much more exciting than mine. But I have spent a lot of time with that, so I'm working on systems and support and really trying to tease out both PBIS systems with behavior and then also multi-tier systems with, with a lot of the active, excited, and working with, trying to ensure that our kids have access to those resources they need so that they're becoming, they're able to become the students that they want to be. One of the pieces that we've wrestled with this last year, and you guys talked about it this morning already, there's a lot of students coming with a lot more than needs. So teachers are feeling a lot more burdened, a lot more pressure on, they need to fill that gap for kids that are coming with those needs socially and emotionally, well-being and all those challenging situations, while still trying to attend to what Anne-Marie just spoke to, of all the core issues. So this last year, we've watched our data increase significantly in the number of referrals to the office that are behavioral challenges and really challenges. While as a district, I believe we've done a really, really good job of attending to a lot of the tier-three, tier-two intense behaviors. Some of them haven't been attended too well at a level of supporting teachers. So Doug and I, this is, part of the pieces that we want to really talk about and see how we can attend to is to look at our systems and how do we better support our teachers in the classrooms on a day-to-day basis, and really making sure that they're able to attend to the tier-one issues that are happening in classrooms more efficiently, effectively, as well as systematizing and aligning our resources. Suraj and I, Doug and I, also been in some conversations around, how do we align our resources with not only special ed, but our tier-two and tier-three severe behavior challenges that we have on a regular basis? And so for me, it's unpacking some of the systems we have and realigning and putting those systems better in place to better be efficient in what we do, so that when kids need help, we tend to it quicker and more efficiently, so that we're not dragging that along time and causing our teachers the undue stress they need, while at the same time giving the kids the resources and support they need more efficiently so that they can access the general classroom as much as possible.
Oh, so there's clarity about what you're speaking. Can you clarify briefly tier-one, two, two, and two?
Sure. Tier-one is what generally all kids are going to receive in the classroom. They're going to get that tier-one instruction, general access is going to be there. Kids get it in the general class. Tier-two would be at a school level or possibly sometimes with a classroom teacher, where they would get a little bit more intensive support, that would require maybe an extra support by a psychologist or support by a social worker, or other interventions that could support and help these kids with the resources and things that they may need without removing them from the general classroom. When you start getting the tier-threes a little bit more intensive, sometimes it requires us to look at and decide whether we need specialized instruction, or whether it also may require outside supports and helps from what our district-level resources, as well as from within our community, from lost out to behavioral health and/or other resources that we have. Yeah.
So how do you see us providing better support for our teachers to give that tier-one help with our social, emotional?
So, good question. Part of this is us understanding, how do we continue to provide the trainings needed for teachers to be able to understand the complexity of kids? A lot of our students are kind of a lot of trauma, and so how do we build their capacity to know how to attend to kids that may deal with trauma, and how to seek supports that maybe they don't need to attend to? That they don't need to be that psychologist in the classroom all the time, that maybe we say, you know, let's take this to a student success team with the principal and a few others, and get this kid somehow, kind of social worker that's trained in this kind of area, so it doesn't feel like it's a burden to the teachers. That makes sense, so building their capacity to know how to engage kids and know where their tensions are, but also giving them the right resources and things.
Can I, I love that. I'm a therapist, trauma, that's all, that's my thing. I think that would be great. Going back to a previous conversation we had, is this something that, I guess, is this something the teachers are wanting and requesting, or is this going to be another thing where they think we just added something to their plate? Does that make sense? Like, I think it's necessary, but how, and how do we make that, how do we make that?
By simplifying. I do what Anne-Marie is suggesting, it's by simplifying other things so we can attend to the basic needs. Like, I feel like these two almost kind of go hand in hand.
And it's a catch-22 to your point that teachers are going to be exposed to these students that are kind of more traumatized, so they need to know how to deal with it. And if they don't, then they're feeling more pressure and stress that way. But at the same time, you have to give up something to attend to. So part of it is identifying, how do we train teachers earlier, more often, beginning of the year, and then throughout the year, following up with the training. So Kathy Ants, and it would just have a candidate, and it's also be a PBIS coach to help with some of these tier-one instructional pieces.
I was just going to say, you got Kathy, she's going to be great.
She's like the best teacher ever. I really want a promise to have her.
I'm so sorry. She's going to be great, because she's going to be the influence for the whole district, and that's where we're excited to see. Again, these are the pieces where we're trying to build the capacity to the teachers.
Why, she's like awesome.
I know. I like her a lot.
Terry is teary over here.
So, again, you're right on that. Building the capacity is the greatest resource we can have, so that they know when to attend to it and when to say, I need help, and not take that burden on themselves.
So I guess maybe how this plays into our discussion is, in our board goals, what are we going to emphasize, right? What are, like, is this going to be one of the things that we need to emphasize in our board goals? Is that kind of what we're talking about?
This is why we're having this discussion, because we want to have all this background before we start working on our board goals. So this is a good...
This is giving us an opportunity. These guys are on the front lines more than we are. They're giving, seeing, hearing from everybody what we need to develop the goal.
Regina certainly could. In answer to your question, it certainly could influence the board goals.
Yeah. I think it's systems, again, the more we can align our resources, and this is where Suraj and Doug and I have been really trying to unpack some things that have been, special ed is their thing, we do our thing, and neither twain shall meet, and that's something that is really hard to unpack and really align, but we're working on it. And it takes some of the work from all of us to try to figure out how to do some of that. Any other questions for me?
So the days that the teachers are in school before the students come back in August, I mean, do all of the departments kind of coordinate? Is it just teaching and learning that they are doing curriculum and classroom time? Or would, would some of us be able to have, let's have a social worker get with their school and talk about some of these things and start with the supports now before the students even get here? I mean, how much of that schedule, that there's room for all these things we're talking about?
So you just touched on, again, one of the bigger challenges, is there's so much information, and this is what Anne-Marie was talking about. She's got so many things that she's got to cover, instruction and teaching and learning and all those components. The schools have some space and time, but they're also attending to this, and there can be some overlap with aligning what Anne-Marie's doing with Karen and professional development with that tier-one instruction. But there's also components where Kathy was, and it works with just a specific faculty. And so she'll list, last year she spent a lot of time at Lakeview, working on tier-one instruction, and just having to create a classroom and attending to the trauma that a kid may come with, and they've spent a lot of time on that. So we're doing both, but there is some alignment and overlap as well that Anne-Marie is providing.
By negotiated agreement, 50% of the time prior to school of those days, except for the 181st day. So for five days, 50% of the time is allocated to district, 25 to individual teacher prep, and 25 to the principal. So the principal can maybe go to Kathy and say, hey, we really need to address this and something, or anything else. And in those, in that 50%, it's not all, some of it is working, school teams working on, say, the new innovative learning initiative with onsite. So that's, it's not us coming and doing training, that we are giving them time. Additionally, on the PD days, we're reaching out to the directors and assistants and superintendents to say, do you want to offer classes, choice classes, that teachers would go to on that choice class day?
And these are some of the things that, again, we can do a little bit more coordinated effort on, what does a tier-one instruction look like for Karen to be able to help provide at that, on our PD days. Other questions?
I was just going to mention that we currently, as a council, do divide up the 50%. It's not, it's not solely teaching and learning. We work with Anne-Marie about making sure we meet those needs, but we also have state requirements of trainings that employees have to do annually. They have to do their civics training, you know, understand the laws that they have to meet in how they interact with students, those types of things. So there's, there's a lot that goes on in those first few days, but we work together to try to design that. I know Doug, in the past, his office has worked with the social workers directly, if they have a message that they're sharing during those first few days. But again, we kind of divide it equally depending on the needs during that first, those first few days.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, here's Todd. Says, I apologize for not being able to attend this morning's meeting. I'm currently with approximately 30 teachers and the principals from four of our schools that have been having the training. I'm sure that what I suggest, we have a number of questions, and I'm happy to follow up to the board members on, or in a later study session. After evaluating and considering the implications of both middle and high school students, I would encourage the board to consider reconfiguring the secondary schools by moving ninth graders out of the high school and into a junior-high, middle-school model similar to Alpine School District. This would likely require a third junior-high school.
Oh, boy. You were right. Except is this more exciting?
The fastest I can drop the bomb, I'm walking away. So I can't answer any questions.
You didn't say anything after that? Why?
That's always...
Tell him he's going to be here in person next time if he wants to do something like this.
My request, my only request is we kill Kat. This is dead.
Right, exactly, exactly. I think, since you know, just like right there.
Wait, wait, wait. What? Were you joking or are you being serious?
No, no, I'm joking.
Oh, okay. I know.
So that's Todd's kind of question, thing to think about.
That's a, that's a big thing, I'm talking to your phone. That's a big thing, Todd, to just drop off.
We know even why that would be a helpful thing.
Follow-up or anything?
I can't speak to Todd. I can only personally, I know that there's some complications with sports, with how they play across district, and all that plays a huge part of it. If they're playing in the high school, they're not sanctioned as a junior-high, so they can't play in the district, but other outside areas. And so they travel further, it's a lot more burden on the schools.
I know, the bigger concern that he's mentioned to me is actual graduation of students, because the transition of students into the high school at ninth grade, he believes, and he would have to share data about this, but is more difficult on students in their ninth-grade year than it is in their sophomore year. So that's why other school districts have chosen the model that they have. But he feels that it would be beneficial for students to stay in those different school settings, to help them get the credits that they need and make the transition more smoothly to high school.
And if they stay in, before they get to the high school block schedule, they actually can pick up a lot more credits, and that was the other thing that I think he had mentioned. They get, they can acquire more credits before they get to that tier.
So I'm not Todd, but with the whole Dixon issue, we were looking at a lot of different things. I looked at the data, and I, do not ask me what the data says, I mean, the specifics, but it's what Jason just, the data supports that kids, the graduation rate increases, the social-emotional is better, one ninth grade is in middle school, or junior high, or whatever it's called. That's just what the data has said.
Whether it's called junior high or middle school, that model is kind of what he's looking at.
Tell Todd to send us some data.
But those are, those are also the pros. I know there's got to be some cons, too. Like, what are, what are both sides? I'm not fighting against it, I'm just saying.
The athletics is the biggest con that I saw, that I can remember coming up, was that the athletics, and that's, and that is the con that, and this is a big thing, that parents don't like. The sports parents don't like that, and we would have to deal with that. And then just the scheduling with all of the sports. That, from what I remember, and I don't, Todd, send us the data, but I, from what I remember, that was the biggest con that I, at least that stood out in my mind, was sports and schedules between ninth grade being in high school versus being in junior high.
I'll tell you another con. Said it before, having three schools speed into two high schools, it takes one group of students.
Unless one school is not great.
But we did it before, and every, people my age did this, and we're okay. We're okay. We have lived through the trauma, we will be okay. I like it because it means that we're going to, we're going to have friends, maybe it'll help with some of this east-west divide. We're going to have some people who... We're gonna have some people who went to school in the east but then move over to the, and have friends in the west. Like I feel like it might actually help the divide rather than, it's gotten worse since we got rid of Fair, to be honest. Sorry, Jennifer.
I'd like to volunteer, Todd, for a pool.
I mean, the other thing, another con is cost.
Yes.
That's, that's a huge thing.
But if costs were no big deal, I would, I would, I would advocate for four instead of three. Four makes more sense in my head than three.
For that, for Jennifer, same reasoning. But I've never studied the issue, so that could be, yeah, this is a whole, this is another.
We'll put this on a future thing.
Several years.
When he said, have more time on the study session, we'll need to have more.
You mentioned your con is gonna be cost, your cost to your taxpayer.
An ongoing cost.
Yeah. So, okay, on that note with Todd.
Thanks, Todd. Thanks so much, Todd. Open that can.
Thank you. So, my request would be that we almost become hyper focused on data and, and that we build out metrics, KPIs.
What is a KPI?
Key performance indicator.
Okay, thank you.
For our district. And we have those dashboards. I mean, you know, when you go into the private sector, and you know, they've got their KPIs down and their data down so much that they know their profit and loss ratios for the day. They give it down to, you know, what, what their inventory turnover ratio is, how fast they're turning it, you know, if they're turning it too fast or too slow and how do you adjust their ordering of things. They, they run everything completely off essentially data driven metrics and everything that we've talked about in here today ties back to that. And so my request would be that, that is that we become hyper focused on that piece and build out data dashboards that are easily able to refer back to to say, where are we at compared to what, you know, we want to be tracking? So that, that would be my request.
That can help to drive a number of financial decisions.
Correct.
Staffing decisions.
Correct. You get, I mean, there's so many things. A perfect example is what Anne-Marie was talking about, like, let's say you're, you know, one of the things that, as I presented to the board, the budget the other day, there was like on slide number three where it listed kind of our initiatives and goals. And there was a thing that said, hey, look, we will look at how we spend our resources and we will look at the programs and things that are not money or doing what we would expect them to do efficiently and we will repurpose the money into those other programs that we believe. And a perfect example is let's say, you know, some of these programs you could run out and, and it doesn't have to necessarily say, look, how great is, and I'm, I'll use DLI as an example, seems like I wanna get picked on a lot, but, you know, it doesn't have to necessarily be a metric of how is it impact student learning? It could be just a metric of public, this is how much it costs us to run the DLI program above and beyond our normal standard, right? And is it so important to you that we, that you're willing to fund it, right? Those are the kinds of things where if we become really focused on the data, it helps to derive stories, it helps to give you the message that you need to the public when you ask for tax increases. It helps to give the message to the teachers as to why we're doing things. It helps to get, build the story or messages, you know, why we need to make a change. And it becomes easier instead of saying, this is my opinion, it can say, look, I understand that forty percent of the people are unhappy or thirty percent of the people are unhappy or whatever that number is, but by making this move, it will impact everybody better across the board and I understand maybe upsetting.
Right, so I think this sounds great. I'm guessing the board feels that way too. Hey, let's do it. Do you just want our blessing or does this cost more money?
It's gonna cost money. It's gonna cost money.
It'll cost money, I think, upfront, but in long run, it will make us more efficient.
So, would you explain, is that?
How to simplify so we can better support teachers?
Yeah, yeah, and it's okay when I spend money.
And then make us more money in the long run.
For a program, is it we need to hire more staff to do it?
So there, there's a couple of different ways you could go about doing it. One is hire it out, have an outside consulting firm build it out and then they would turn it over to us and say, okay, now you, you essentially just track and update the data as is. You could have them update it as needed. We could do it internally as needed. There's other route would be we hire somebody and internally build that out. I think the better route would be to go outside first to help build it out and then bring it in house personally.
Off the top of your head, how much are you willing to say?
My guess, off the top of my head, and this is gonna be a high number because I want I'm adding cushion and I, it's also manpower. It's not something like you're applying a program and describing through these manpower to build it out. Quarter million bucks is my estimate.
Over how long?
To build it out, a year. Yeah.
Do you know what they have, they, does Domo have like an education department? Because that, I mean, essentially you're just, you want something like Domo. I know there's like two or three companies that do it.
Exactly, yeah.
But Domo, the local one.
I, I don't know if Domo has an education department. I would love to.
Because, and do we have, in finance, there's a lot of definite metrics that you use. Do we have that in public education? Like public educational, like finance numbers, you know, like return on capital, just things like that you, you'd get in a finance report.
So.
What kind of data will we be pulling?
Yeah, so there's stuff that we can easily pull kind of like from the reports that I've previously done where you compare to other districts and things like that. But there's gonna be other, your, your standard metrics, yes. There, there'll be things in education that we can easily tie to and calculate. There's gonna be other things though that are gonna be, probably have to be built out would be my assumption, based off of the indicators that we possibly may wanna look at differently that are outside maybe some of your standard, just financial metrics.
Well, I, I would, I mean, you should probably go talk to a company like Domo and see if they have a public entity wing because, and what they do with that is really, really impressive and they, they parse it out and, and the dashboard's great. I just don't know about public entities. And they come in and use the data you have.
Yep.
Doug?
All right, thank you. In an effort to be succinct, Student Services, of course, is concerned about our families and our students. And just by design, we have a lot of work things to call it there. And so the feeling we have about the priority is connection. We are, want to make sure we know who we serve and what their needs are and how we best serve them moving forward. You've seen a lot of data, although it's, there's a ton in there, probably ought to be maybe brought down to something that, or some themes and things to be more articulated talked about in terms of families responding to that survey as well as our staff responding. One survey piece that I recently had an opportunity to visit with my staff about is again, another state survey that surveys students in the sixth, eighth, tenth and twelfth grade around their, their feelings about, about health and wellbeing in school. And the top risk factors that we have for the past few applications of that survey have been concerns about low commitment to school. This is against students reported, low commitment to school, depressive symptoms, low community attachment and attitudes favorable to antisocial behavior. Those are some categories of, of discussion items that we see have always been on the survey, but there has been a marked increase from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one, our last administration of the survey. So the things that we say, oh, was that the fault of the school? No, I, we all know there's a lot going on in the community. There's a lot of hard things that are happening to people. We would hope that the schools would be responsive to and support our community, right? We are here to help build a sense of community, which when I use that word connection, I worry about some of the antisocial behavior that's not only felt by our kids as they report, but is also felt in our community, among the adults, in our system. Is there more of a, of a feeling to be more community oriented or connected or that collective good of everybody or is there more of a feeling of individual desire to meet their needs or even, you know, tribalism, whatever you wanna call it? Are people more inclined to get together and celebrate and work together in the benefit of their kids these days than not? Those are some concerns that I think the survey did a lot of this, make this concern about. I wanna make sure that I emphasize, kinda like this was mentioned by Jason earlier, that I wanna note a lot of things you, this group has worked on really hard with relating to diversity, equity and inclusion. And I'm not afraid sales work because I think that we just need to say, we work in a diverse and increasingly diverse neighborhood. A demographic that we ought to spend some time on is what is our demographics as a city? I know that Buddy Richards helped us with this some time ago. Is it time to go back there again and talk about where, where we're at with who lives in Provo and what the demographics, even from this most recent maybe census, shared with us? Who we trying to serve? What's our connection to them? Inclusion, the work that again, a number of you participated in, the reach training we did, talked about also trying to meet people where they're, where they're at. We're seeing culture and seeing that diversity is an opportunity, right? Whether that's saying, well, the heritage culture that people would call that belongs in a city, it doesn't need to feel like they take a loss because we're recognizing the asset that other people are bringing to this community. In other words, it's a, it's a, not a deficit mindset, a grow positive mindset we need to bring into this work. And I think the school district can continue to set that tone. I'm just really honored to work with seven people in this school district who take a lead here to try and lean into this work to say, we can make a positive difference with our, with our community by being willing to create safe places to have conversations where everybody feels included. So work we're doing in Student Services, I would hope to continue to have support around restorative practices, right? That's the kind of way we look at student behavior, with positive behavior intervention and support and implementing into that. And we spent some time earlier in the year, we're talking about how work with social emotional wellbeing, creating kindness, creating hope, creating feelings of how to interact and self-regulate when you get frustrated or concerned about something's going on. We've got a lot of kids that aren't used to social situations, a whole batch of kids coming into the elementary schools that haven't had the opportunity to be in preschool, to have a lot of social interaction. And we're seeing the difference, notably, we're seeing the difference that young kids have in a hard time attending school and knowing how to effectively engage there. So engagement, I would add that to that whole idea of connectedness and engagement. And that could be the conversation that's there about attendance. But engagement, I think, is a word we explored during COVID when we talked about, well, we can't get kids here, but what are we gonna start measuring? We started looking at metrics for engagement and had teachers start marking engagements for it. It was a real healthy conversation to have about not just having the body there, but what does it mean, look like, how can we quantify, how can we support and nurture reward and, you know, and reinforce engagement in school by kids, by parents, by everyone. So those are the things that I, I think that we're continuing to have concern about. We hope that our development of training for teachers, policies and procedures related to make sure that they're tied on everybody, that we began a process of doing a, a diversity audit. Some of you participate, you watch schools kind of take some of the data that they have around opportunities for kids with programs, enrollment, behavior, discipline, and begin to start looking at how are we including everybody? Are there some unintended consequences of the things that we've done in the past that we can continue to improve and we create greater capacity to meet the needs of, of all of our kids? I, I love that, I coined it all the time. It was set three or four times in the pipeline that you folks worked to, to adopt our forsaken inclusion statement. All we solve, it means every, and that's what we want to ensure as much as we possibly catch Student Services, that we continue to go with that, right? And I hope that though, there's always change in leadership and the superintendent announcing his retirement and knowing that a lot of you are running for reelection and so forth, I hope that there's a continuity of this message going forward. Student Services really would love to continue to emphasize the connection and engagement and dealing with these things that are going on, not because of the schools, but because of things that the schools want to help the community. Feel like Provo City and Provo City School District are one in trying to make it a very healthy place for people to, to live, to raise their kids and to stay and work and have a good community. The last data piece I'll share is the one that's just kind of subtly a hard one. I'd go back to the idea of having us look at demographic data. Census data twenty years ago said that Provo City population was about a hundred and five thousand. We've since increased about ten to fifteen percent, they've grown through the last twenty, twenty-two years to where we're about a hundred and sixteen, hundred and seventeen thousand of student, student population in Provo. Meanwhile, compare that against our enrollment data, and I think you saw this in Derek's report the other day, right? We remain not growing at ten and fifteen percent, we remain pretty flat, maybe one or two percent growth, while we'd say our city, again, that's a real generalized number there, but it's that idea of saying, there's lots of indicators, both qualitatively and qualitatively, to say, is the school district aligned with and connected with this community and serves them well with who's in our city and how we make sure that we are the educational option that is best, you know, suited to serve our whole community. So I'll pause there and ask you any questions generally.
Do you know on that census data of being up ten to fifteen percent, if student population is also up that much or?
So it's like we need to look into that.
We don't know yet.
I just, I'm just telling you just generally. So in other words, that's a piece of data that says, let's dig and find out more data on it. So now's not the time to do that. We're gonna talk about priorities, work to do around the audit work. You saw, when you attended the training, you saw the October one numbers for the past four years. You just saw even that, some interesting data points about who comes to school and how that has changed even in the past four years, right? We could take that more longitudinally and look and say, how has Provo City changed in the student arena, not just the general population, right? There's gonna be lots of factors, an aging of the population, changes of the two universities, the number of students or young professionals who live in the community, et cetera. So we could talk about all those sorts of things. So it's a sophisticated conversation, I'm not prepared to answer, but we could spend the time to really dig into that and learn about how we can better serve that. Other questions or comments about that? Oh, Jennifer?
That's what you were talking about before and all the work that you guys are doing to create connection with our families, I think is fantastic. And something I would love to see us do in our district is to label that and really advertise, like this is a wonderful thing that we are doing and unless you're a family that has come seeking help or really need it, like I think there's a lot of families who don't know about all the good things we're doing and I think we could highlight that better on our website and things like that.
Yeah, thanks, Jen. And those would be a great segue into what I think Caleb's gonna talk about next, is this idea about proactive and work quickly around this. Last thing I'll offer is that everyone, of course, not only has these topics on, on mind, but they also have the idea of safety and security and the wellbeing of our, of our students and feeling that they can just relax enough to feel safe and secure to learn in our school. And our parents feel safe and secure about sending them to schools, the tragedies of recent months and I thought people alarmed about just the, the general safety, security molding of our, of our school staff and our facilities, right? So we are already working around this idea of not only just what some might call the softening, in other words, the feeling of community within the building, but also the physical, those two coming together needs to be not only something we work on, but we let people see explicitly that we're working on. We get the message out and not just wait to respond to the next time the news calls, but that we are actively promoting and campaigning on it. So I think Caleb might mention a little bit about that one this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
So for the past six months, kind of when the turnover in my department kind of stopped and we were able to still apply positions, we've been working extensively to kind of change, keep, do better the things that we've always been doing, identify new things that we, we can do. And then as we identify those things, put plans into place to, to try to implement them and work with different people to do that. So what I'm gonna talk about kind of starts with an invitation as a request off of it, but it all comes back to really trying to be more proactive in our communication. COVID especially, it kind of, it kind of forced a lot of reactive communication. I feel like that's kind of. feel like that's kind of maybe become the standard a little bit too much. And with the manpower and the plans and costs that we have, we're hoping that we can move past that to where everything is more proactive. We are working with student services and Doug's team around the safety and security thing. We have, we've had a couple meetings, we have plans, done more meetings this summer to implement something as we get into the school year, to really focus and communicate that with parents. But getting back, so my invitation is really to, for the board, to come see my department, kind of come see everything that we're doing. And I think a lot of times when you hear about communication, you think website and social media, news agencies calling, things like that. And while those are a portion of what we do, there's a lot more that goes on. And hopefully, as, as we're able to show you those different things, a couple things that come out of that, that's where the request comes. As we move forward with the work that the board does, the work that the district is doing, we always talk about the communication aspect and communicated, decisions made, okay, we need to communicate that. But the request would be, as we're having those discussions, take it a step further and say, okay, we know that you guys can do this. How do we best communicate these things? How do we tell our story with, with what you guys are doing? Maybe, maybe it isn't as simple as saying, okay, let's email this out to parents. Maybe you have no ideas of things that we haven't tried that you could, you could suggest to, when communication is that topic, we think we could take that step further and actually work through how we think it might be best to communicate that. Or, or learn new things from things you guys have seen other places, or ideas you might come up with just on your own. We're not, we're not limited in, we're not going to limit what we do just because we aren't doing it right now. If we haven't thought about it or haven't tried it, we're, we're open to that. And as, as we are being more proactive, we want to identify those things and try those new, new methods of communication to, to reach as many people as we can. So I'll leave it at that. You guys have questions or want to come learn more? We have, we can identify ways to do that. We meet with Rebecca every so often. It could be through, through her to board meeting, it could be one-on-one to come and see our department, whatever works best for everybody. But I think the more everybody can understand and see what we are doing and have, have an idea of what we are capable of doing as a district communication wise, we can, we can prove that proactive thinking.
Next, Doug.
And last, I will tell, I will share my view on this with a story. So it was about five, four or five years ago, I had gone to an Avid training in the summertime, and then I came back and I was running the administrative meetings at the beginning of the year, beginning of August. And I remember speaking about equity, and I remember I said to everybody in the room, as of where I was at, at that moment, I could not define what equity was. I felt that it was being used as a, as almost a political flag point, but not really as a substantive content-driven concept that we could really get a hold of. And I will tell you that since that time, I've had a chance to think about an experience, two experiences that I've had in this district, which are, I believe, probably really stark representations of equity. And so I would like to summarize what I'm about to tell you by saying that we need to think about equity in a way that may be a little different than how we are doing so right now, and that we need to actually go out and try to, for lack of a better phrase, overturn the rocks and see where there are equity issues. And here's, here's, here's my story. About five years ago, I was contacted by the band teacher at Timpew. Now, this is, my example is about music, but don't let that limit how you're, how you're taking this. This could be any subject in any activity in the district. So I was contacted by the band teacher at Timpew, and knowing that I have a background in brass instruments, and I'm kind of crazy for that, that was my profession for a period of my life, playing professionally, I was asked if I would go and coach a brass ensemble, it was called Brass Choir. And I did that, and we worked on a particular piece of music, took it to region, won top marks there, took it to state, and won top marks there. And then the next year, I made the same offer to Provo High School, and I had the opportunity to go over there regularly for pretty much the second half of the year, starting in January, several periods a day, excuse me, several periods a week where I was working with their brass ensemble as well. And we went to region, played a region, and got top marks there, and then we went to state and got top marks there. But I want to tell you the difference. When I worked with the students at Timpew, most of them were playing on their own professional modern instruments. When I worked with the team, the students at Provo High School, they were playing on school rental instruments, not the same quality. The ones at Timpew were playing mouthpieces and those kinds of things which would enhance your sound, and they knew to do that. The ones at Provo High School, I, I spent out of my budget, several hundred dollars replacing mouthpieces so that they would actually sound better. I had to work with Provo High School students on basics of sound production and posture and breathing and, and playing in an ensemble and those kinds of things. I had to work probably three times as hard for the students at Provo High School than I did at Timpew. And the difference was, the question was equity of opportunity. Many of the students at Timpew were taking pride of lessons. They were going to concerts on a regular basis. They were seeing things that the students at Provo High School were not seeing. They were not getting pride of lessons. Therefore, that's why they were playing shoddy instruments, instruments that no matter how hard you work and how good you are, they're going to still sound bad. So that's why I spent a couple summers ago, I spent about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of my unspent budget, replacing a number of band instruments throughout this district because that was needed. What I learned there was that there clearly was an equity of opportunity gap. And that I would like to challenge us, whether it's music, or math, or athletics, or just, just, I mean, think about how many students who may live in one portion of society, how many times a year or, or in their lifetime, they'll go to the zoo versus others, just zoo. There are significant deficiencies in equity opportunities. These are things that kids can learn from. Again, going to a zoo on its own may be not that important to, to the general community, maybe working with, with, you know, advanced level of music may not be that important to people in the community, but to those students, it can be really important. It can be a difference maker. And imagine a student understanding wildlife biology or those kinds of concepts, and they've never seen an animal in the wild at all, or even in a, in kind of like a wildlife de facto setting. So my, my point is that I believe we have to actively strive, look, I'm going to be really blunt here, the DEI statement. Inclusion, I think we know what that is. I think diversity, I think we know what that is. For me, I really had a hard time until I was able to look back on my own experiences of working with two different groups of students on the same kind of thing and comparing the experience that I had to put into this as the teacher. I had to do a very different job at one school versus the other. And I'm not saying one was easier, I think the demands are great at both sites, but they are, we approach them differently. We have to actively identify areas where we are not providing equitable opportunity for students to learn in the education setting. That is, that is now my belief. Four years ago, I couldn't have argued that. But now, as I've looked back on it and had those experiences and really thought about it, I believe I now know what equity is. And you'll remember, I stood up there and I was, I was kind of in a conundrum. I could not really make a case for what I felt equity was at the time. But I believe I have an answer that works now. So, and it's practical, that's the thing, it's practical. It's not just a theoretical concept. This is, this is truly, if you look at the example I share, it's, it really is an example of two different tales in the same district with basically the same kids and basically the same goal, but have to, it has to be approached very, very, very differently. I'll say one more thing, can we talk about this a little bit?
Can I add to that just a little bit? I appreciate you saying that because that's a passion of mine, you already know that. And where I think we've run into some difficulty is, sorry, I should have asked Melanie, is, I mean, maybe we need to save this for another time. It's just, it's just a difficult thing for us to tackle as a school district because my guess is they both get offered the same instruments, but one side of town has more, more money to be able to provide it for their own students. And I don't know if we can make that equitable, but I would love to have a discussion about what things we can do to make it more equitable. And I apologize, that's probably for another time, but it struck a chord in me, so.
That same thought struck me too. And again, if we don't limit this to music, if we just say, this could be anything that we teach, anything the kids experience in our entire K-12 system, and we just have to look at this and say, where are we not filling those gaps? And I wouldn't have known if I wouldn't have taught those two virtually identical classes. These were the best brass players at Timpew and the best brass players at Provo High, and there was this huge gap in what they were able to do and understand.
Keith, do you want some follow-up on what you and we did in this instance? So we looked and found, I found some records from the eighties and nineties in my old files, and it was only east side schools that were offering orchestra for years, only. I mean, it was down the bench. Then I looked at, as a principal, I didn't even know that band was an option. I just didn't know that was something we could offer. I knew we had orchestra. So we found that again, our east side schools were offering band and orchestra, our west side schools, some were, some weren't, and it differed year by year. So we set up a system with the superintendent's guidance and support. All of our elementary schools now offer band and orchestra to all their sixth graders.
And it can generate into the day, it's after school, but it's there.
It's there, it's an option, yeah. And we, I put allotted money into instruments to get, because those teachers, we have certified teachers teaching those courses, and they had a lot of junky instruments. So we built up our elementary reserves in those. And this has been going for about four or five years now. And I spoke to the orchestra teacher at Provo High's graduation, because she teaches orchestra at Provo High and Dixon. The east side has a full-time band and orchestra teacher at the high school and the middle school level because there's that demand. She said she is starting to see the benefits of this universal offering. But it does, this certainly doesn't fix all of the issues, but I think it was the, I just wanted you to know that Keith acted on this, and we've looked at what we could do, and we're seeing, I, I feel much better about the offerings that we give and being more equitable in, in this instance.
And just to follow up, it's tricky because we want to be equitable, and at the same time, I don't want us to take away or limit opportunities with people who have more means because that's not fair, like. And so it's just tricky, and I appreciate that you brought it up because it is tricky. But I would love for us to take a look at it and see, we can't fix the world, we can't fix all the inequities, but what can we do as a school district to help it? And I just want to be very clear for anybody watching, that we do not, I do not believe that we need to take away opportunities from people who have the means to provide different opportunities for the students. And then we, and I think we need to be careful, like, equity then comes with all these other things, and then unintended consequences, I think is what Doug said, and so we need to take a look at that. But I think that we need to make sure that we are looking at not just the kids who don't have opportunities, which is concerning, but making sure that when we're looking at these things, we are not somehow unintentionally taking away opportunities or whatever from the kids who do have, because that's not fair. And I, and I didn't hear you say that, I just wanted, for the public, so that they understand, that is not what we're talking about, we are not talking about.
We're not trying to be Robin Hood here, at all.
Okay, sorry.
I'm going to skip the other one, I'll talk about it in a little bit.
Hey Keith, if it's okay, I'd like to recognize the executive group here, there's something they've done that has been so important to me, and I think important that you'd like to know as a board. When I came here in 2019, we had twenty-three teachers who were not professionally licensed teaching in special education, and because of Keith and Jason and Todd and Doug and Alex and Emery and working with Stephanie at the time and everything. Today, every one of our special education teachers professionally licensed, I got word yesterday from the state, we're the only district that can say that in the state of Utah. That to me was a huge equitable opportunity gap that was not happening for our students. The other thing you need to know, because the leadership of this district and the support we give into the special ed department, I want to recognize, at our two comprehensive high schools, we had almost a hundred students who were not accessing tier one instruction in English, language arts, and math. Now we are down to less than twenty students, and those twenty students, we're looking at ways to connect them more. Again, this was an inequity, it was an equitable opportunity situation, right? So Keith, I guess what I want to say is, I appreciate that example in music, but I want you to know that there are many other examples that are happening in this district that we're working very hard to make more equitable opportunity. Thanks, Munisha.
Thank you. So that's, that's our input, and we can talk about any of this any time in the future if you'd like to, individually, collectively, whatever. Then with, with all of this as a, as kind of a background, all of it floating around, I guess we should probably take a quick look at the, our existing board goals and start to just, maybe the way to process this would be, what's timed out? Probably the easiest one are the graduation goals, because those were date stamped, but what are the things we have timed out? What are the things that are not so much a priority anymore? So with that, just, I want to dig into those board goals.
Um, we'll start, like, with each, kind of briefly go over each goal. We're not going to make any final decisions here, but maybe come up with ideas, with things that stick out to you about these goals, that, like Keith, the things that we have timed out, or the things that you would like to see added to it. And we will definitely be having more discussion on this in the future. Perry Wall will be helping us, and this isn't something that we're just going to throw together.
My thinking, this may or may not be something you're interested in, but what I've been doing, taking those, and all the discussion we passed off, and the survey and this, is trying to tie them to each of the goals. And so, and we're talking about data points and having that digital dashboard of whatever we'd like to have included in that, what do you call that? I don't know the big words, anybody? KPI, XO, is that what?
Nah, I get it now, because that's what my son did for a living with Walmart and other, other, I had no idea that when you stand that stuff and you go through the check sand, what a big deal that is. And that made sense to me, so, thanks for that. Anyway, as you, in my thinking at least, and it may help, as you're thinking about going through what the discussion you're going to have on these goals, you've had input today in regards to those potential things that you today in regards to those potential things that you want to make a look at. So, and that's how I'm going to frame that, but at least my thinking for a little while, that might be a little bit helpful in our discussion. Thanks.
Do you want to go first, or do we?
No, I'm kind of new to this, so I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say.
Well, I think all of us are new. I looked at this, and the last time it was modified was January 31st of 2017, and I don't think, I think McKay was the only one. Were you on the board?
I was there too, but it was, there was not really much modified, honestly. It was, I remember, I don't remember a lot of modification. I just remember a lot of discussion about it and.
A few little edits.
A few little edits, that's it.
I, I have an overall question, like, what's the purpose of the aim statement? Do we need to have that again?
The aim statement was something, is something that we use internally probably more than board uses. For a long period of time, it had been, in public education generally, it had just generally been accepted that we move kids through without there being any real goals or accountability. And so, the aim statement basically says, we want every kid to finish every year on grade level. And we know that we're not there yet. It's not happening for every student, but, but we are hoping that that is starting to be a little bit more prominent than it was. And ultimately, Terry, my view on this is, the more we have students finishing on grade level every year after year after year, the higher our graduation rates, they go up just because fewer and fewer kids are failing at each respective level. So, it's more of an internal guide than necessarily a big, huge board item. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, does it need to be updated by the executive council, or does the board need to update that?
I think because it's more of a internal function, I think we would do that in council. And certainly in consultation with the board. But it does, your question raises another interesting point, which is, at some point, does the board want to revise their big mission statement?
I was gonna say, do we want to include mission statement in this discussion?
You definitely could.
Yeah, I just wondered.
You definitely could. And the one we have, I think, is well over 12 years old. I'm not saying that it's bad, but it rarely is referred to by leadership or board. And so, you know, one of the, Gary Wall taught me this when I was a high school principal and he was my coach, that we need something that's measurable and memorable. And I, I don't know what we have right now as either.
Simone, I would love the opportunity to go first.
Go ahead.
I don't know how helpful any of this will be because I don't really know what I'm doing. You're welcome, people who elected me. So, as I look at the aim and the, and the goals, they're, they're good. Like, they're all things we should be doing, but I have to agree with Keith that I'm not sure how measurable it is. But at the same time, how, is that how, it's kind of nice to have, we're, we're higher, you know, we're, higher up is not the right term, but we're further away.
Big picture.
Yeah, we're big picture, and so I don't know if we need big-picture goals, but like, continuous academic improvement, absolutely. Well, I don't know what that means. And then, like, financial prioritization, long-term planning, and transparency, like, I don't know what that means. Are we talking long-term planning for finances and transparency of finances? Or are those, is that, like, I don't know, like, certainty and stability in the direction of the district? I don't know if we could be more vague. Like, I don't know what that means. And so, I, I have to be really honest. Again, you're welcome, people who elected me. I've never looked at these until maybe once before today. And I would love for these to be something that we refer to regularly, maybe not every week, but I'd love for them to be something that, that actually do guide us. Because right now, I feel like we're doing these things, but it's not because of this document or, not that the document should guide us and everything, but I would love for it to be a document that we actually refer to and that we use when we're talking to the public or, and when we're, when we're fulfilling our duties, that we refer back to this and say, well, where does this fit in? Does it fit in? And how, how does it fit in? But it does seem very vague. At the same time, does it need to be vague? Maybe it needs to be vague. I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. I do think, I, I do think, at least for me, and it's an internal thing, is the aim, this is confusing to me, to have district aim statement and board goals, and then a district aim statement, and then goals. Is there anything, Terry just sent me a screenshot at 11 o'clock last night, so, is there more specifics on the goals somewhere that I'm not seeing? Or is this all that there is?
Yeah. So, are you in the board handbook?
It's in the board handbook.
Oh, I was trying to pull the.
And it's also, if you go to schoolboard, if you go to provo.edu, schoolboard, you can. Okay, too. So, this is going to be one of my pieces of feedback.
Page nine.
And are you, are you finished? I don't want to interrupt.
Yeah, I don't really have.
One of my pieces of feedback, the, one of the reasons I feel like we don't notice this is because it says, Goal One, Continuous Academic Improvement, and then it proceeds to have nearly two pages of detail of what that means. And I'm like, this is just so bogged down with stuff. Like, we have got to make this more concise.
So, I feel like I'm talking out of my mouth too, because I'm like, it needs to be more specific, and then it's more specific, and I'm like, that's like too long, so I don't know.
Well, there's ways to, so if you can craft things correctly, if you can get a good writer who knows, who can put into words what we all kind of want, and I don't know if that's.
Questions along, Gary.
I don't know if that's any of us, or if it's Gary, or who it is. It's me and you. Okay. Whoever it is. But we cannot keep referring to this with two pages of what it means to have continuous academic improvement. If we can somehow craft it just right so that it's one quick statement that really conveys correctly exactly what continuous academic improvement means. Or basic bullet. Or basic bullet points or something. You know, I mean, just an example is when we were working on the diversity, equity, and inclusion statement, it started as a big thing.
You're reading what I wrote down.
And then it took it, and then they took that and they put it into bullet points, and then it was so much more, so much better organized, so much more readable, everyone could understand it better. That's what I would like to do with these goals. I don't, I don't know, maybe we change some, maybe we take some out or put some in, and that's fine too. But this has got to be a document I can refer to easily.
Yeah.
Not refer to after I've spent two hours studying it.
And I need not to agree with that because the two pages, I was like, okay, did it include this? I can't remember.
Right.
And I can read it all. I don't think it included, oh, no. Did it? I don't know.
It goes back to Emery's whole point of simplifying. We have to simplify this.
And to the point Gina was making, what does that mean? Like, we could have supporting documents for different departments, or kind of how like schools do their PBIS, and what does this look like in the whole? What does this look like in the classroom? Like, what does continuous academic improvement look like in this situation or that? We could have that separate, but it definitely should be a one-pager, and it should be, I'm doing this with another group I'm working with, we're working on some similar type things, and we started off, like, big group, which I would actually recommend. I think we need to bring in more stakeholders and like make this a big process, like, what's important to our district and things like that. And it's going to take a lot of time, but then we get a whole bunch of like, what ideas are floating to the top, and then maybe what are the categories, and use some of the other ideas to form like one cohesive sentence about each one, that some of the other main points are, right?
Yeah. Can I, can I, and this is a, this is a genuine question, because as I think about it, I was, you know, taught, when you have a goal, it needs to be smart, right?
Smart.
Blah, blah, blah. And so, is that something, do we want to have a goal? I honestly don't know the answer to this. It may not be our place as a board to have specific goals that we then come back to at the end of the year and say, did we meet these specific benchmark, like data, like Derek was saying? Did we meet specifically the data points we wanted to hit? But then I thought, as I was thinking about it, I'm like, is that our thing, or is that more a school thing, or is that a more department thing? So, that's just a question that, and I apologize, I have to leave early to go be a pioneer. But, so I'm going to put it in Rebecca's lap because apparently it's her thing. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. But that's a question that I have. Is this, is that something we want to do? Is that, do we, do we want to have that? Or is that just more cumbersome? Or is it helpful? I don't know.
I have a comment on that.
Yeah.
A thought on that really quick before you go. Someone just asked me recently, do we really want to get into redoing all this right before we change superintendents in one year? Like, is, and I, my thought and my comment back was, our board goals should be very umbrella, and they, and our super, our new superintendent, whoever that is, should be able to work and make changes to whatever they feel like they want to do within our board goals. Our board goals should not be so restrictive that a new superintendent comes in and doesn't feel like he can make changes, right? They should be very umbrella-like so that stuff can happen within it.
And for any teacher board members. I agree.
I'd say, I'd say it's more like a vision instead of smart goals.
Well, I think that we should be, as the board should be setting that vision, not, not, not that, not that superintendent shouldn't, but I think it's a board thing, and we hire the superintendent, so we should be working with the superintendent with that. And I would really like to have input from our current superintendent, who has a lot of experience, and I would love to have that before he leaves. And so, I would, again, number one is what you say. Number two, I would love to get Keith's input before he moves to the beach.
That's an assumption, but I hope the truth is that.
Which means it, it needs to be more of a living document instead of just agreeing, something sitting there on the website.
So, whatever's written has to be like, like what you're saying, living enough that it can, that people can move around underneath it.
It's a guiding document.
It's a guiding, yeah.
And it can be changed if necessary.
I always thought that I was going to be held accountable for showing evidence of having that board rules, and we never really had that discussion. But that's another angle I was, that you could be looking at for the next superintendent. And yeah, I mean, you're right, the superintendent's room to move around underneath that umbrella statement. But, but that's for, you know, instructional vision. I don't know that teachers would look to you as board members to set instructional vision, but they have every reason to think that they ought to be able to a superintendent for that. That's just one example of that, that room inside of the umbrella.
I would just mention that this discussion you're having now in regards to board goals and kind of where you are and having, looking at this can also help you in your selection process. Because you can be able to identify your potential candidates to, okay, do they fit some of the needs and the things that we want to do based on our strengths and our concerns? So, what, my intent would be to help flesh out the strengths and concerns that we have, that the board has, I was going to say we, because I'm still Provo. I see all my former colleagues here that, that we have, we kind of flesh out those strengths and weaknesses. And we can make it big, as you talked about, which normally in our role call is strategic planning process. Or we can kind of narrow that down a little bit too, to make it look like, okay, this is what we want. This document is more of a visionary type of document, of a lot of specifics to document from 2017, that we identified some strengths and concerns, and this includes most of those. As I looked through it again last night, like you did at 11 o'clock, I haven't looked at it for a long time because I've been on the beach, but.
Sweet.
I, so I just wanted to make that comment, that, that it's a good time to be able to do something like this and to kind of flesh out the document you think would be helpful to you to set policy, which is direction. And so, the direction would be, all right, so maybe we don't want a smart, because that aim statement is, is the business, in the business world, we call them smart goals, very, very direct, and it is, it is measurable. And then all this content below that, it's just two pages worth, this type of things that the board wanted to look at for potential measurables. So, just in summary, it's a good time to have a summary of how Provo is doing and working with the current superintendent, and then have that in mind as you go through the selection process of the new superintendent.
I've got six and a half pages.
But it doesn't have to be six and a half pages.
It shouldn't be.
And as a potential candidate, I would look at this and say, okay, which one of these, oh, I want to show my highlights and my work that I've done in the past that would help Provo School District move along. And this is where I'd go. I'd go to that page and see, okay, what am I seeing, what am I doing, that I can be a match for Provo City Schools. So, that will be helpful as you think about this document in the future.
Sorry, one more thing before I go. I, I feel like everything that, all of the asks made today by the executive council, I think were good, with perhaps the exception of Todd's, which was a bomb. I personally like it, but I don't know if that's the right thing for the district. And so, I love you, Todd. Probably like he's dead.
He is dead.
But one thing that I was, that I would love to see some, and it doesn't have to be these words specifically, but one of the things that I would love to see in the, somehow reflected in the, like, the titles of the goals, is communication. Like, I feel like we need to be more, and again, more clear, more is not the right term, but I would love for us to have it be very apparent in whatever we're looking at, that whatever it is we're going to do, our communication is going to be stellar and matching. I have seen, since I've been on the board, I've seen so much improvement, improvement's the right term, but I really like the changes that we've seen happening, and I would like to continue that. But I would love for it to be reflected somewhere in here, that our communication is transparent, and it's clear, and it's quick. And so, again, not that it has to show up with something like that, but having said that, everything that everybody said, I feel works together for the best of our, of our students, and I appreciate all the efforts that everybody puts in. Now I got to go walk through the desert. Anything for me before I go?
Good luck.
Thank you.
Wait, where are you going?
Wyoming.
Wow. We did that one six years ago. This year, I'm just walking through the desert too, but I'm going to set a lake.
I tried to get an exception because my ancestor shot at everybody else's ancestors going through the desert, so I thought I should be exempt from walking through the desert, but my husband had ancestors who walked through the desert, so now I have to. Hi, President. I was going to say, President Healy, that's not the right.
Was it only in Rocky Ridge?
Is that in Wyoming? Oh, is that in Wyoming? I think that might be what we're going.
Yeah. Don't stay, don't stay much longer.
Bring wind protection.
I was just going to say, are you prepared for wind? It's bonkers windy.
Yes, we're prepared for wind, rain, and extreme heat. So, I apologize for taking so far.
It might still snow.
I would actually hope if I stayed long enough, the buses would leave without me. My husband just texted me and said, bus three is waiting, so I better.
And, Gina, have fun. Thank you.
It's not possible.
I'd like to add one thing, only if you would mind making sure this.
She's not here. She'll be right back.
At one point, we talked about this several months ago in a gender review or a gender interview or something, and Rebecca mentioned, and I'm going to paraphrase here, with all of the money that we spent over the last few years on technology, that should we not have something about learning-infused, technology-infused learning workforce?
So, that was me. I feel like we should give credit to Jennifer. Was it me? I'll take credit. I don't remember.
It was you.
All right, all right.
That is, you, mine is more about teaching our students to be digital citizens, like, how to live with technology and the social, emotional, and to not be on the screen all the time, you know, that kind of stuff, which I still am hearing a lot from parents about their concerns, and how happy they were to turn in a phone book. Like, that was the best part of their life, is to turn in those phone books at the end of their year, which.
Well, at least they didn't throw it at us.
Yeah, that's true.
So, one thing I, that we've been talking about a lot too, that I didn't notice in any of the goals that could be added to, is the importance of attendance.
Yeah. I think especially with the work that Doug will be doing over the next year plus, yeah, we've got to have a little to do with that.
Engagement, engagement.
Yeah.
Oh, also, I mean, I think there's a little in there already, but we could better add in the wording that we've been using lately about creating school, school cultures where people feel welcome and belonging and embracing our diversity and things like that. And then also, I'd love to spend some time talking about what qualities do we want to see in our students? A lot of groups, in fact, Utah now has adopted something called Portrait of a Graduate, and it's all these different competencies. And if you go to schools.utah.gov/ portraitgraduate, the state has out what they've done, they approved it, it looks like in 2019. And we don't have to use their exact competency, but what kind of qualities do we want to see in our students besides that academic part? do we want to see in our students besides that academic part, which is really important? But what else are we wanting to help our students with?
We want books minds and streets minds.
Yeah. And companies, companies are looking for collaborators and critical thinkers, you know, those kinds of things.
The only thing that people haven't already said was, did teachers and students and parents in the community and taxpayers have any input into the goals?
I think that's where Jennifer talks about having stakeholders come and be part of this.
I would love to, who, parents, students?
Especially students, I mean, they have the unique perspective, but is always ignored.
So Terry, let me, let me tell you what happened. This was my first or second year in the district, and so Vance, check this, he was still on the board at the time.
I'll take it there.
And so the board was very different than it is now. I had different, different thoughts, and essentially, and I'm just saying from my perspective, okay? And that's, that's all I'm saying here, not mean to be critical, but we talked about board goals, and there was only one person in the room who was assigned the duty of writing them, and that was me, as a non-board member. So I was assigned different categories, and we, we met, we talked about them many times, and then eventually they were adopted. So the process we used then, I don't think it's a model process at all. It's just what, what we did. And I think there are better ways to do it from this point forward. So it was a different time with the board.
See, that's where I feel like we're at. Like, I feel like someone needs to stand up and like, now direct us on how to like, like, put the sticky notes on the wall, like we did the one time, or whatever, and take us through the process, because here's where I don't know where to go from here. I know what I want, now how do I get there?
Well, if I may, I think what, what you should do is know what you want. Spend the next month or two, when it's popped into your mind, is jot them down. You can email them to me, I can forward them on to Gary, or you can just hang on to them. And then probably toward the end of August, when we get together for another study session, we will, I think we've got something else, I don't remember right now what it is, but well, we can spend at least a half, maybe even more of that study session on this activity. And Gary will be ready to, to take us through maybe a couple of processes to narrow things down. So, Gary, you good with that?
I'm good to talk with you and a few others to flesh that out. This is really great. And just, Terry, one quick comment. What Terry talked about, as you all kind of mentioned, and you started that with your discussion on that perception data. And so generally speaking, how big, how much input do you want on the next activities? You want, I mean, the next iteration of this that you would like? And there's, you know, there's big, little, and you, you know, and you can start with, you know, vision statements and mission and, and a big strategic planning process. And or you can look at, we know what we have right now, we know what kind of things we want to improve, and that's our goals. I haven't done it recently, I don't think Keith's assigned you work with things like that in the district before, but one of the things that Jason and I would do typically was look at what other districts are doing. And we do that in all of our salary studies and our job descriptions and things like that. So it wouldn't be a bad idea if you wanted to assign, I would do it either way, but to kind of look and see what I'll find and our neighboring districts are doing in that regard, and the state has done in, in setting what, what they had in mind. But I would say that, I would recommend highly that you have some way, somehow, that the superintendent report regularly on data points, and that would be evidence-based. And as an example of Keith and what our teachers are even doing, you, you give evidence to how we're doing on the things that we think that, or my superiors think are important.
You say that, the evidence-based is what Derek was saying about being able to tell our story.
That's right. Exactly right.
With data.
Data, I need that, sure that data, and, you know, we call them portfolios, wherever you want to call them, whatever level, but when we're working with struggling individuals, that we want to see evidence of growth. And so when we're working with our district and kids, we want to see evidence of growth in the areas that we've talked about today. And we, we know the underlying causes, things like equity and those type of things. And so Doug will have evidence-based things. So do we want to put those, those things in our big pictures and evidence-based? So I, I would say that looking at what other folks are doing around us is great, including the state. I love that. I hadn't seen that, and that would be an interesting interview thing. Structuring our vision, the board will want to promote this. I'll be quiet now, thank you. Todd's going to hide, I'm going to hide now.
Any further comments? I, I personally feel like today's been very productive, meaning everyone's a lot. And I appreciate the executive council and their open and honest pleas, or what they feel like. Bombs, or bombs they've got. And it's just...
We can put a lot, we can put...
We will put Todd on the August...
We can put some money, could you put some money on...
Question for an hour.
Just the structural? I'm just thinking through, yeah.
Yeah.
I've been in education, I've seen this before. We had, we had separate ninth grade campuses in some of the districts I've consulted with. Separate sixth grade, separate ninth grade. I wasn't going to say that, I just made some notes, so here we go again, good job.
Anyway, I appreciate everybody being here and extending this meeting a little bit longer today. And I look forward to the next discussion on this, because I think it'll be really good. All right, since we're at the end of our meeting, is there a motion to adjourn?
Soundless.
All right, thank you.
Happy summer.